Good evening. It being October 24th, 2019, this is the Acushnet Planning Commission. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
Motion to open.
All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is being audio and videotaped for Mass General Law. I don't know if you gentlemen have had an opportunity to look for the minutes for July 25th, 2019. All in favor?
Aye.
With the vouchers. Also, we just have to have one for October 24th. We want here, it was canceled, so we brought that to the next meeting. We have to accept those two. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Item number two, vouchers. SW call for professional services, 1,084-23, and for our wonderful Secretary Dawn. You can sign those by, considering Brian. Item number three. Mail from August, September, August, September, October. Basically, just from Behaven. Nothing on the line. Item number four, planers update. We'll do that at the end.
Yes.
Item number five, I have 30 seconds. That's from billing inspector to boys in silver regarding 148 Peckham Road. Road special permit granted to Aruda, 2018, folder from the project included in folder number five. Where that's a large one, I think we'll take that at the end of the meeting. Is that okay with you guys? All set? With that, it being 6:45, we'd like to thank the people from Woodland and Carman. We have a Ms. Carol Harris, and I don't know the young handsome gentleman's name.
Zach Henderson.
Thank you, Zach. MS4 permit stormwater issue per conservation. Thank you to our sweet Ms. Mary Lee Kelly. She is our stormwater lady. The floor is yours.
I asked them to come to do a presentation for you guys on the MS4 program because it is bigger than me and my department, and basically involves everybody in town. And so I wanted you to hear from somebody who's well versed in. And it just so happens that our MS4 program is going to be audited by the EPA on November 6th. Yeah. So I...
Mary Lee, you've done a phenomenal job.
Well, thanks, but we'll see. But in the meantime, Zach and Carol, again, fill us in on what the program looks like and what the requirements are.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, thank you for having us. Appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about stormwater. It's near and dear to my heart. For better or for worse, I've spent the last 20 years or so dealing with water resource-related issues and work across the region on stormwater compliance for communities just like yours. And we are kind of entering into a new era here, and I will define MS4 later on in the presentation. It stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. So if anybody was on the edge of your seat wondering what the MS4 stood for, but I have a slide that will cover that. So this is a little bit about why we're here. The general permit, which I will talk more about and provide some detail about, was reissued in 2016 after much consternation. Was reissued by the EPA, and it became effective on July 1, 2018. So we just finished the first year, permit year one, of a new federal Clean Water Act permit obligation for the town of Acushnet. And really, as Mary Lee said, this permit program, for better or for worse, obligates communities across departments and across jurisdictions, whether it's public works or water sewer, planning, building. So really requires a little bit of a town effort to make sure that the compliance is met. You'll find that out during your audit process. And I think the goal here was just to try to make sure you guys were well informed of what this was all about.
That process is November 6th, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And I do have handouts on the table, Hunter. If those would be helpful for you guys, we'll come have a look at those.
Do you have another one?
No, I think we have enough. And specifically tonight, we're going to kind of focus a little more detail on some of the obligations around land development, which will be applicable to you all, a little more applicable to you. So before I start any presentation about stormwater, I like to put this slide up. It's a simple graphical rendering of a typical stormwater system in a residential setting. And this is what the system consists of. A storm drain and inlet along the side of the street. It collects water from people's homes, from roadways, from parking lots. That's passed by way of some underground piping system and usually via gravity to the nearest receiving water. And while many of you probably know about this system, when we've done surveys in municipalities around New England, about 50% of the public have no idea that this even exists. So this is challenging, not only for Mary Lee to manage the program and the permitting program, but obviously to get political support when one out of every two citizens has no idea you even have a stormwater drainage system. And these are your assets. So regardless of a federal program, regardless of a federal mandate under the Clean Water Act, these assets need to be maintained and taken care of. And there's no treatment here. So anything that's on the landscape that washes off the landscape ends up being passed downstream to some receiving water, lake pond, otherwise. And so unfortunately, the effective, well-functioning drainage systems that we've built over the years in most communities, the unintended consequences of that is that anything that's on the landscape, on the home, on the driveway, on the rooftop, ends up getting washed off and getting passed down through those drainage systems down to the receiving waters untreated. And while this is a relatively dilute form of pollution that's in the stormwater, right? This isn't concentrated industrial wastewater. This is not something that's highly toxic, very dilute, but very big volumes, right? Every time it rains, lots of volume ends up in our receiving waters. And it's readily recognized within the scientific community, the regulated community, is that this is probably the only increasing source of water pollution left in the United States. We've done a tremendous job through the Clean Water Act managing water pollution programs. It's been landmark legislation coming up on 50 years in a couple of years, which is exciting. But we still haven't fully addressed this problem. And this problem may not be addressed entirely through permitting programs like this one because the pollution comes from all of us. Comes from our cars, comes from our pets, comes from our fertilization activities, comes from farms, comes from a variety of sources, right? So very difficult and diffuse to manage this source of pollution. We don't have it all in one big pipe where we can pipe to one treatment facility. So increasing challenge for us in the engineering and science community to figure out how to manage, and the federal government regulates it through these permitting programs. So if you take a look at these, these are the big three permitting programs through the Clean Water Act for stormwater, I should say. So there's all the traditional stuff that focuses on wastewater and industrial wastewater and municipal wastewater. But these are your stormwater permitting programs. The first one's very important that you all are familiar with, is it's the construction general permit. So any project disturbing one acre of soil anywhere in the United States or under subdivision that would disturb greater than one acre becomes regulated under the construction general permit program. And so that operator or owner of that project needs to go to the federal government or to the state if they're delegated, which they are not in Massachusetts. They need to go and pull a construction general permit for that project. And so that overlaps quite a bit with the work that you guys do in that we need to be informing the applicants that they're required to meet the construction general permit obligations. So that's a separate general permit. And then there's an industrial multi-sector general permit that's a kind of an industry stormwater permit. So facilities like metal recyclers, transfer, or other industrial facilities have to have a stormwater permit also for their discharges. And then finally, what we're here to talk about today really is this municipal MS4 general permit, which covers towns and municipalities of certain size. So those are the big three, and that's really what we're here to talk a little bit about today. So again, what is an MS4? The four S's come from the Clean Water Act, municipal separate storm sewer system. And if you take a look at the figure in the lower right, there's a stormwater drainage pipe, and there's a sewer pipe in the ground in most communities. Want to let these guys in?
No, leave them out there. Shut the door, will you? Thank you. Get them out of here. 10 bucks a head now to worry about stormwater.
I'll pay 20.
20? No problem.
Here 30? So this is where the four S's come in, municipal separate storm sewer system, and it's a separate storm sewer pipe, right? There are communities, older communities, that have combined sewer systems that have stormwater and sanitary wastewater in one big pipe. In your community, you have two separate systems, one to carry sewer and sewage, and one to carry stormwater drainage. And that's what's regulated here under this permitting program, is that. The bigger pipe in the lower right. And again, those typically just flow to a receiving water untreated. The sewer system obviously goes to a sewer treatment facility of some sort. So this is your typical Massachusetts MS4. There are 270 regulated entities in Massachusetts. We'll look at a map of that in just a second. But this is the typical asset that we're talking about that's actually regulated here. About 100 miles of stormwater drainage pipe. I'm not exactly sure what you guys have. Anywhere from 5,000 to 15,000 catch basins, 2,500 manholes. And then what's regulated under the permitting program are these discharge points, the place where water comes out of the drainage system and enters the waters of the United States. And typically, communities have between 100 and 300 of these. You may have a few less than this. Some smaller communities have less discharge points.
I believe we've got less.
I think so.
So the MS4 general permit, the Clean Water Act initially in the 70s was built around wastewater discharges, right? And industry, industry in municipalities and trying to get a handle on those things. It did a great job with that. By the mid 80s, the scientific and regulatory community recognized that we're not going to solve our water quality goals without addressing stormwater in some form or fashion. Typically takes the EPA a while to get moving on stuff. Took them about a decade, and they issued the first permits to the largest municipalities in the late 90s. So Boston, Worcester, and Stanford, Connecticut in EPA Region 1 got their first stormwater permits, I think in 99, I believe. And then around 2003, in most parts, in most of the country, sometime in the early 2000s, the so-called Phase 2 communities, which you are one of, got their permits for discharging stormwater. So these are, it's a federal permitting program. You file a notice of intent to comply with it. You get a permit, and it really provides you permit shield. You're protected from lawsuits from citizens groups, environmental groups, or others for discharging pollution into waters of the U.S. And that's really what this permit is doing, is permitting you as a city to discharge pollution into waters of the United States. And you have to do something about that pollution in order to comply with the permit. Most of Eastern Massachusetts is regulated. That's what that map in the lower right is, those are the urban areas of Massachusetts. Like I said before, about 270 regulated entities, also includes the university systems, the transportation agencies, anybody that's federally funded typically falls into this permitting program. So the Veterans Administration, for example, other departments like that. In most states, 47 out of 50, the state administers this permitting program. Massachusetts, New Hampshire, and New Mexico are the only three left that do not do so. So what that means is EPA issues you the permit directly, right? With Mass DEP as a co-regulator on it. That creates some challenges, as you might imagine. It's the federal government. When the federal government makes actions, makes permits like this, they're highly scrutinized. And you don't have a state regulator that's kind of in between the federal government and the local community. And so it creates some, you know, creates a pretty robust, if you want to call it that, or very difficult permit to meet. And the permit that you're looking at right now, which is quite thick, and I'm going to bring a copy, has a lot of fairly robust and rigorous new requirements.
And this is all in Mary Lee's hands?
It's in your hands now, too. I thought we were with you tonight. Yeah, it's Public Works and...
I'm sharing.
Public Works and...
Mary Lee's been doing a phenomenal job, and it is with this. I mean, if you're talking about EPA and DEP and every, this one does this, this one wants to do that, I mean, it's a challenge there, and she's been doing a phenomenal job.
Very much a challenge, yep. And we'll get into a few of the requirements there.
Thank you, sir.
So every five years, a new permit is supposed to be issued. 2003 was the first one, and 2018, for all intents and purposes, was the second one. So it was once every 15 years. And that's how it will be moving forward. There will not be a new permit in 2023. We won't see that probably for another 10 or 15 years. But they've structured the permit conditions and the requirements to be able to advance beyond the five-year permitting program. And there's some requirements that kind of ramp up out into the outgoers. As a fundamental basic of the permitting program, every community has to develop a plan. You all have a plan, so it's an outline, it's a strategy to how you will comply with that permit. When EPA comes on the 6th, they'll want to look at that plan, and they'll want to look at paperwork that you all have associated with your documentation. There are consequences for failure to comply. I'm not going to get into the details here, but there, enforcement has happened in Massachusetts. It's ongoing. EPA does a pretty good job of actually enforcing. Other states don't necessarily, but it keeps the permit program in the limelight when enforcement happens, obviously. So there's six fundamental actions that have to be taken. These general permits allow the federal government or the state regulatory body to not have to issue an individual permit for every discharger or every pipe outlet. Would be ridiculous. And so the general permits cover a lot of different folks. Everybody has the same requirements. So what this poses for you all as a smaller community, you have the same requirements as a city of Newton, or a Lawrence, or a Quincy. So you have the same kind of requirements that other communities, and they have more staffing, more capability, have. It's one general permit for all of the communities of Massachusetts that are regulated, and all the communities have to cover these six measures, right? And so again, I didn't bring the permit, and what I've done is kind of simplified these six measures to put them in kind of basic terms. But there are a lot of detail built into the permit about what you have to do to comply. And if you do the work, then that's deemed in compliance with the permit and in improved water quality measure. There's no distinct measurement goal for you under this permitting program. So these are the six, and I'll go into each one of these in a little bit of detail. So public education components are really implementing some kind of program to help the community understand its role in keeping water clean. Kind of sounds easy, but often it's very difficult for communities to really do well. But there are a bunch of templates out there. There's a statewide stormwater coalition that's come up with videos and other things, and there are a lot of publicly available, readily available materials for public education. Public involvement is another one, so this meeting actually meets that. So engage the public in decision-making throughout the program, invite them to comment on the stormwater plan, invite them to comment on the program. Don't often get a lot of comments on that. Again, one about two citizens don't even really know we have a stormwater system. But there's supposed to be some forum for engagement with the public throughout the permitting program. And then this number three is a big one, and I'll define what illicit discharge means because it's not exactly clear. But what this is about is finding and fixing failing septic systems or sewers that might be connected directly or indirectly to the drainage system. And as much as we'd like to believe that all our sewer systems are very tight, and I'm not suggesting that yours isn't, we do find a lot of problems in this area in New England, and it's why it's a special regulatory focus area for EPA Region 1. We have a major crisis with our aging infrastructure, both for water and sewer systems across the country, but especially in the older parts of our country, and we're part of that. So our average sewer systems in our vicinity here are usually around 100 years old, whereas the rest of the country is on average around 50. And so we've gone well beyond our useful life of sewer. They break down, they leak. They leak into the nearest open pipe. Those pipes are often the stormwater system, and it comes out the other end untreated into the waters of the U.S. So EPA Region 1 is very focused on this permitting program, and this part of the program is by far the most labor-intensive requirement that you'll have in the permit, and it's new. And so this is going to be a fairly big lift and going to take quite an effort by the community to meet the obligations here. And I'm not going to get into too many of those details, but just be aware that this is a big deal to EPA, and they've developed some good techniques to find and eliminate sanitary wastewater that's found its way to the drain, but it does take quite a bit of work.
Is there mandatory time limit on this program, sir?
Yep, yep. There are specific annual yearly requirements. Some things aren't until year three or four that you have to do, but you essentially have 10 years under that IDDE portion of the program, that's what we call it, the IDDE. You have 10 years to investigate the entirety of your drainage system in a pretty kind of labor-intensive way, open manholes, and do some sampling and analysis and that kind of thing. So that's a 10-year obligation. So this may interest you a little bit more. Construction site runoff control. This is ensure that construction projects do not pollute runoff with sediments and debris, kind of simply stated, right? Again, the regulatory program under the MS4 says any projects over one acre disturbed for common scheme of development, which is a little more vague, you know, there's a year, it's a timeframe factor here, like subdivisions over time, but all sites greater than one acre disturbed or common scheme must be compliant with the construction general permit, right? So first obligation is we have to ensure that our contractors, our owners and operators of projects that exceed that acre know they have to go and get their own permit from the federal government called the construction general permit, irregardless of your local rules. They have to go get that permit. And then secondarily, the town is responsible to ensure that the erosion sediment control plan that that owner or operator puts together is developed and consistent with the construction general permit and with the MS4 general permit obligations. You have to have a review process. You have to have documentation that you have a review process. And then there should be some form of site inspection and enforcement, whether you do that or you push that on to the contractor, whether you have a third party do it, it's kind of up to you. It's not, doesn't dictate in the permit what has to happen. But for those projects that are greater than an acre disturbed, there should be some type of inspectional process. And in communities that get audited, often that will come to the forefront that you need to be out on site a little bit more often with contractors to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be.
What was the, you said there's a rate that's allowed, you know, if you're doing a subdivision where you're doing three lots per year, and if you're under that one acre.
The time...
So is that one acre disturbed per year?
No. The timeframe of common scheme is pretty gray. It's pretty gray. It's not real clear exactly what that means. And so I know that you guys, you know, communities that are dealing with subdivisions often deal with that. You know, you're phasing in over 20 years. It's really about this master plan or common scheme. Does an applicant come in here with a 60-acre lot, and you see that there's going to be six phases to this, they need to start to think about construction general permit. But this becomes quite a nightmare, as you can imagine, in places that have 400 and 500 unit subdivisions. You can start getting into situations...
We're not into that big one. I mean, how biggest ones are what, 10 or 15, Mary Lee?
17.
17? I mean, it's just, it's all on her shoulders.
Yeah.
So how can we help her?
And you'll maybe get some clarity from them during the audit process on subdivision. It's a little gray about a common scheme.
It's tough, that gray areas, you know, it's tough for everybody, man.
That's right. Do you have, you know, do you have two lots at the end of the cul-de-sac that don't get developed for five years? And then the guys are back in here, and they're going to have to reopen a federal permit? You know, I don't, you know, it's a little more gray. And the idea here comes back to this, which is let's try to make sure construction projects are not polluted, right? And have some level of control, whether it's single lot as part of the subdivision or a grand subdivision plan, but need to make sure that everybody kind of understands this. So that's the basic of construction site runoff control. Want to try to stay on time here. And then there's a post-construction obligation. So this is ensuring that new development or redevelopment controls and treats runoff before it leaves private property or public property. And again, one acre disturbed or greater project. So these are the bigger projects in town, but you need to have some post-construction standard, which I understand that you do. And that standard has to address those size projects and has to provide control for peak rate of runoff and water quality coming off of that site. There has to be a design plan review process. You have to have trained engineers or staff to review the design, to ensure that it meets the criteria of the permit, as well as the criteria of the state's stormwater management handbook standards. There needs to be a long-term O&amp;M plan, and the new requirement that are really going to be challenging for communities is ensuring that those things are maintained over time. So it becomes a little bit like a licensing program with long-term tracking and maintenance of private stormwater treatment systems. Because those systems simply won't work if they don't get maintained. So there needs to be a little provision. You may have to think about that in your workflow process of how you're going to start to track these big projects to keep the owners notified that they have to be taken care of. And as you all know, owners change soon after development. The subdivision owner may go away entirely, and now it's a homeowner association that's responsible for those things. It gets quite challenging. That's part of what EPA would like to see communities do, is make sure that these things are maintained. Any questions on those two? Those are really the two that most kind of overlap with you guys.
Mary Lee, you got anything on those?
Not at the moment, no. I've been looking at this all day, so I...
Listen, no, it's, other than subdivisions and stuff, we don't have too many one acre small plots, right? Other than putting a subdivision in, in our community here, that's what we're looking for, am I correct?
No, because we have a stormwater bylaw that says disturbance of 5,000 square feet or more needs to be addressing stormwater.
So you do have some local regulations that are stricter than these federal obligations. The federal obligations are what they're going to come and audit you on, though. So you have a little leniency in there below that threshold at the local level in what you do and how you manage it. But any big projects that exceed that threshold, make sure you have the appropriate paperwork and process for those.
Do you think we do all that, all our plans and everything?
Well, great. I mean, we have the 5,000 square foot lot size, so we're exceeding the requirements.
Right, right. Already. Which should help you with your audit.
With the audit.
Yep. Still needs to be the appropriate paperwork and trail and tracking and ensuring that these things happen. And they may want to go look at a site, and that's what we talked about a little bit today, is sometimes when they come do the audit, they'll want to go out, and they'll look in their forms to see which projects are open in their database, and they'll go to the sites, and they'll ask the contractor to show the plan, show all the notice of intent filing, all that stuff. And most contractors have no idea what they're talking about.
That's the challenge right there, right?
Most of the, you know, most of the big contractors usually know about these permitting programs and go through the process if they've gotten in trouble one way or another. So the final of the six, control measures is good housekeeping, pollution prevention. These are best practices like sweeping streets, cleaning drainage systems, doing pollution prevention activity. And again, like I've told this to many people when they look at this program, ah, this stuff's kind of easy, it's pretty basic. These things do take effort to manage properly, and they're a whole lot cheaper to do this than to try to treat through engineering all of the stormwater discharges, right? So it's in our best interest to implement these programs for better water quality and not have to treat and engineer our way to a stormwater solution in the future. So here's just kind of a quick recap, some of the new items. You have to have a good map of your full stormwater system. So again, that asset that you all own and operate needs to be well mapped and documented. There's an intensive illicit discharge detection and elimination program. There's an intensive illicit discharge detection and elimination program. There's a lot of labor associated with that. They are putting a priority on construction, post-construction programs, making sure you have good programs in place. And then in some places, there are some specific kind of special waters provisions. So the communities in the Charles River are really the guinea pig communities. They have a fairly extensive additional requirement in the Charles to reduce nutrient pollution. And then much more detailed kind of tracking and reporting requirements. So no longer do we just get to kind of write into our annual report that we're doing a great job and we wax poetic about how wonderful our programs are. Now it's about send us the data. Show us the form, show us the documentation. How many sites did you inspect? That kind of thing. A little more explicit. This is just a little bit about your plan. There were certain year-one requirements. Some of those you have met, some of those you may not have fully met. Most of the year-one and the year-two requirements, and this isn't really meant for you to be able to read it exactly, but most of the year-one requirements from last year and year-two are largely administrative. So there, the requirements are like get your plans written down, write down and document how you're going to do things, get your kind of administrative house in order. And then as you move into the out-years, years three and four and five, it's about implementation of the IDDE program, ensuring that you have a good post-construction tracking program, making sure you're staying on top of, of things. Catch base and cleaning, street sweeping, those are ongoing, and you guys already do that work. So here's a little bit about permit year two. So this is where we are now. So we're in the fall. There's some specific municipal facility inventory and standard operating procedures that need to be developed this year. The public works garage and transfer station, maybe the recycling center may need a special plan, its own stormwater pollution prevention plan. And then there's a number of other kind of catch-up administrative items, including mapping that really need to kind of take place this year. And I do have some cost slides that I think are actually in the paperwork, but not in the slideshow. I hid those here, but we can talk about costs. But EPA has presented some estimates of the cost of the program. And as you can see, when you kind of flip to that page, they've, those there are your handouts.
I don't have one.
No, I have a class in it.
Oh, there's mine.
You guys got one? Mary Lee?
Yeah. Projections of MS4 program cost?
Yeah, just like got into some of them, but not all of them. Okay. It's, it's not, you know, if you were interested, we could walk through that. It's up to you. I know we're almost out of time. I'd like to leave a few minutes for questions if you guys have them.
What's all of what the EPA costs for? What's it going to cost us?
So yeah, so what EPA presents in there, what is it for rural communities? I would call your communities, you know, smaller community. So they, they estimate $200,000 to $500,000 annually for implementation of the program. Now, keep in mind that that's inclusive of catch base and cleaning and street sweeping, which you already do. And so there's programmatic elements that you're already doing as a matter of course that are built in here. And I don't know what those programs cost you all to implement, but these are their projections, they're not our projections. They're theirs.
Go ahead, blow some.
Yep. I don't, I don't anticipate that the program is that costly. I think you'll find that most communities, if you can invest, put the catch base and cleaning and the sweep, street sweeping aside, right? Those are costly, labor-intensive. But if you do the other compliance obligations, $50,000 to $150,000 a year, you'll cover most of that for alpine contractors, lab costs, analyticals, the labor resources necessary. Many communities are hiring staff persons to do this work. So there's stormwater program coordinators that are being hired in different places. So there are definitely some, some implications here for a new ramped-up federal obligation.
And what is this, mandatory?
You're in it. So you're in year two. Yeah, so we're, we're right in the obligations. You'll find out from EPA in November what they think about your program and what they want, you know, what they want to have ramped up. Again, if there's any silver lining, you know, I know this is not, you know, unfunded federal mandates are never fine, but you do have the drainage system. Drainage system needs to be taken care of, and the public should understand that they're getting drainage as a service, whether they have to pay for it or not. They're getting a service by you all taking care of and maintaining your drainage system. You do have an asset that has to be taken care of either way.
So we'll find out after the EPA comes down and-
Yes, absolutely.
On November 6th, is that correct?
Right. And I'll be preparing every day, yes, I'm there.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions? Anybody from the audience? I mean, these people did a phenomenal job. I mean, we have contractors and engineers and everything. I mean, Henry is our planner. Everything costs money. I mean, everything's tight today. And whatever's mandatory and we have to do, we have to do, but we have to look how to save our taxpayers some money.
Yep.
This gray area of phased-in construction. Russ has what, eight individual lots, right? Something like that. So would that be something that's phased in? I mean, because he's only building them one at a time. Like it's, he's not going in and just plowing up a whole acre.
Yeah.
And then another acre, you know?
I'd rather probably not answer it because I don't know that I have the right answer. I don't know if there is a right answer. I mean, I think it would be interesting to have the conversation with EPA, maybe not about your particular property.
He's going to do it anyway.
One of the many in town, so.
Exactly, exactly.
I mean, these guys-
It's, it's common scheme is also the other word. So is there a plan? Do you have a master plan? So there's some like loopholes in here, right? Where, oh yeah, we don't really have a master plan, we just know we're going to do it over time. But they have nothing written down that says I'm going to do it, and this is the timeframe for doing it? That's a little, you know, that's one way that people wiggle around.
We're just getting on the end of our first master plan going into our second master plan, am I correct, Mary?
Correct.
Sometime down the future. And if this is applicable for some of our master plans, then it's worthwhile because our original master plan, I believe we got almost three quarters of it done, am I close?
Yeah.
And if this is added to it just to help the community without spending too much money, that's what we're here for.
It's an obligation of opening one of those general permits, keeping it open and modifying it as you need to as you go. And, but then they are fairly, you know, there's a lot to it. Filing the NOI is easy, complying with the permit is hard, but filing NOI is easy. You can do that, you know, it's not a big deal. But actually doing what you're supposed to do under that notice of intent to comply with the general, construction general permit is pretty daunting, a couple hundred-page permit, a lot to do. But again, fundamentally, it's about, it's about perimeter control and erosion sediment control. We're doing a good job of that.
Yeah, because most of, most of our, our residential sites, because I'm an excavating contractor as well.
Yeah.
Most of them, if you have your standard 60,000 square foot lot, you have, depending on what part of town, you're, you're going to have, you're going to control your drain water on-site. So if you, you know-
It's mandatory, right?
Well, no, it's not mandatory, but it should, it should be-
Yep, it's mandatory.
We have a bylaw.
Oh, see, I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot that doesn't get done, I mean.
But it's your best practice in the way, right? Yeah, if you're dumping it on a neighbor property, if you're putting it on the street.
That's right.
Right.
You know, instead of, you know, like, like say a 5,000 square foot lot, you probably have to tie in your roof drains into the, you know-
Sewing system.
The truck. Versus, you know, most of your, you know, most of the city parts are already populated. So it's mostly the hour where you can contain everything, you have private septic. But, you know, like, you know, when these plans that come in, Mary Lee reviews them for erosion, you know, or John designs them, or, you know, it's all, you know, things that we are already implementing at some time.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Anybody else, any other questions? I want to thank you both very much for your time and a phenomenal presentation. I can't thank you enough. I hope you have a show right home.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I got an apple for the ride.
Yeah, of course, thank you.
Much better off, thank you.
Appreciate the opportunity to be with you.
Thank you very much for being in. And with, with that, we'll just take a one or two-minute recess while these folks break down, and we'll bring in the next folks. From commercial break, it being 7:15 and a half. Form A, 120 Perry Hill Road, two lots for Mr. Blue Voice, is that how you pronounce it?
Yeah, sure, sure.
We know you, go ahead, Russ. Tell us who you are, we know who you are, but China-
Rusty Voice, 120 Perry Hill Road in Kuschnet.
Why are you here?
Oh, just for a review of two Form A lots.
Bring your stuff.
How are we doing today?
We're doing great.
I'm actually glad we're in the top ten and get to hearing about that.
Yep.
Under the copy stamp, my law.
Get the my law, get some copies for the boys.
Yep.
Kind of just to give one or two here. Mike will take one, I'll take one. Is that one to that, one to Henry and to Brian?
Yes.
You got it? Okay, I got one also. I drive by every day.
I drive by every day. Can't miss it.
Tell us what you're doing, brother.
Just, just created two Form A lots. Nothing spectacular, you know?
Got the frontage 211, 233, everything's all set, back on the side, depth 150, 150, gentlemen?
These are those ones that we approved before, are they all right?
No.
I don't know.
See the, see the little ones? See the little ones?
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Those are the other ones on the other side. So no, these are new.
Okay.
And these are prepped as well.
Do you have your, your upland and small field?
This is, yeah. See this right here? See this little cutout?
Yeah.
So this is the small field.
Right, okay, right.
What was your cutout?
Do you have your upland?
Yes, yes.
You have your upland 425, 425, right?
Yep. Yeah, we had to give a little more in the frontage for that.
Little bit here and there and there you go.
Yeah, Dave's pretty good with that. Needs to be checked.
You got to check them every now and then.
Yeah, yeah.
Brian, looking okay to you, brother?
Brian, I'm in.
Mike?
Yep.
Motion?
Motion to accept.
Call in David?
Yeah.
Give us the my law first, please, with the magic pen. All you have to roll. We got to sign them.
Oh, you got to sign them?
Got a magic pen? Nope. As always, Russ, if you'd be kind enough, after you put this to registry deeds, please give us a book of the page. That's all yours. One of the last, yeah, I'll give one of the last, if you got one. Just have a check of all the stuff here. File Form A, submit it, stamp it, time clerk, yes. Submission Form A check, yes. I just don't have a copy of the receipt. Am I wrong? Did I miss it? Copy of the receipt on the front of all. If you'd be kind enough to get that, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, sure.
Pre-calculation.
No, no, no.
Huh?
No.
Okay. Sure will appreciate it.
Yep.
Seventy-five bucks, that is correct.
Seven-five, correct?
You have two lots.
Yeah.
Right, correct?
Yep.
These correct?
Yep.
Plans, 10 copies, we're all set. Re-accepted, two absent. We're all set. If you can just give me a copy of that.
Yep, I can do that.
Be, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, do that tomorrow.
Great, thank you very much.
Hi. Thanks, gentlemen. Take care.
7:30. Look at this, right on time.
Back on track.
Huh?
Back on track.
Form A, City Club Ave, two lots. Mr. Sabos Giora, how do you bounce it, sir?
Sebastian.
Sebastian. And we have Mr. Romanelli as the engineer. Be kind enough to introduce yourself and tell us why you are here, sir.
I sure will. My name is John Romanelli, owner of Romanelli Subsets. I am here with my client, Joe Sebastian, who is here to Form A his property into two village zoned lots, which are minimum of 10,000 square feet. And I'm going to pull up the my law for a second.
Good work. Give Ryan a couple of seconds to finish signing it. Give one to Henry and to Mike, please.
Okay. Basically, the lot as it sits on the assessors map right now is about 25,000 square feet plus or minus. It's Lot 41 on the assessors map. We are cutting it into Lot 41A and 41B. They have the required area, they have the required frontage. What they don't have is the depth of 80 feet. Mr. Sebastian did go to ZVA at my request in August, I believe it was, August 6th, there was a, the ZVA hearing, and they granted him a waiver for, he's very, he's only four tenths, not even that. Yeah, four tenths short. He's got 79.6 feet. It's just the way the, the plan was laid out back in the day, it was very choice.
So we got you there, that alone?
I actually made a note on the plan right here that its only mode of appeal decision was granted for this property on August 6th, 2019. The ZVA decision is recorded at the registry deeds in New Bedford under this book of page. I thought there'd be, to put it right on the plan so whoever is purchasing it will make note of that. And decision has obviously been recorded because it is under that.
What was it? What are you talking, half a foot?
Uh, no, you're 1/10 of that, yep.
I mean, it's just stupid. I'm sorry.
Huh? He didn't, he didn't survey her.
But we did locate edge of pavement. There is a sewer running right down Club Ave. There's a hydrant here, there's all-
So you got water, storage, everything's all there.
House is located. Setbacks all conformed. And I know Mr. Sebastian's got somebody already interested in coming into town to build[1793.73] And I know Mr. Sebastian's got somebody already interested in coming into town to build a new house on lot 41B.
Right. Go for it. Gentlemen? Same as plain and simple, go ahead. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Got the my law, we got that first, please.
There is one copy left that we got closed off this 9 year.
Get the magic pen, yeah.
That's a heavyweight pen you get there, Mark, huh?
Didn't give us none.
I think the Polish registry recently pulled out, they have a copy of everybody's signature.
Yeah.
And she checked it. It's the first time it's ever happened to me.
You kidding me?
She said, I want to check these signatures from the planning board, yeah.
They don't trust you, John?
They don't see me employed to audit. Even though I grew up in town.
When did this board of appeals sign off on this, do you remember? Our pin?
August 6th.
Excuse me?
August 6th, it's actually noted on the plan.
Absolutely. That was a long time ago.
Great, thanks.
Again, John, if you would, once you, the sub sir, once you put it to the registry deeds, please be kind enough to give us the book of the page.
I get it, I get it.
Form A, stamp, absolutely. Let's see here, copy of the receipt in front, yes, thank you. Designer certificate. Form A submission, yes. 150 bucks. Bees correct. Lapsies. Re-accepted, two absent. Fantastic. As always, Mr. Romanelli, a phenomenal, phenomenal job.
Thank you, thank you very much. Elvis said that, thank you very much.
Joe? You folks, you don't need a copy of this. Any of these, you have a copy of that?
We're going to get all ready for the birdish when they sign it down.
Get the my law, right? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, when you take this tomorrow, you can ask, excuse me, the, have the recording dish, you can ask for a full-size copy of it, which I would recommend, and you can take that to the closing. This is going to stay at the registry. Pay the $5 if you can estimate the copy of this while they're there. May take a few minutes for them to warm to a shape of this thing.
Thank you, sir.
$75, $75 recorded, $5, $6 for another copy. Sorry for the confusion on that.
Gentlemen, thank you. Can we go to you?
Thank you, John. Thanks, folks.
Thank you.
With that, you got anything important on the plan as update, Henry?
Just, we've been, a group of us have been working on a grant that is put out by the executive office of energy and environment. And it's a grant that would be used to assess the municipal vulnerability of the town due to climate change. So the way that this would work is if we're successful in getting the grant, I think I will get about $10,000, which is used to hire an consultant to work with a core team that should be myself, building inspector, Mary Lee, border health, the major department heads. And we would host some public workshops and there'd be a discussion about where are our vulnerabilities of the community if we, you know, are expecting to see rising sea levels, which can impact storm surge or greater intensity storms, which would affect, you know, we're a riverine community, we have, you know, the Kuschnet River running, straddling, we straddle the river valley. So we'll look at, you know, if we're going to be seeing more storm surge and greater intensity storms, what do we need to do from an infrastructure standpoint to address that? There are some other issues as well. For instance, you know, talking to the board of health about this grant opportunity, they're saying that, you know, with warmer winters, we see mosquito populations surviving. And then, you know, voila, we, you know, seeing an increase in triple E and less now by, less nyl virus and all the tick warnings as well. This could, you know, could have far reaching consequences that we need to address. So the first part of this grant is just to sort of do an assessment of what is, what are the potential problems? And then once we become, you know, once we register our plan with the state, then we become eligible for a second round of grants, which would help pay for, for instance, infrastructure improvements for failed culverts, which would help with, you know, improves formal runoff, you know, which is right in line with what we were listening to earlier.
Right.
So there's a broad support for this. Getting letters of support from board of selectmen, from, and various other boards. And we'll, I recommend that we provide a letter of recommendation as well, which I've written and I would like to ask for signature. I'll just read the one paragraph to Ms. Kara Runston at the executive office of energy and environmental affairs. So Ms. Runston, "The Kuschnet planning board strongly endorse this request for participation in the municipal vulnerability preparedness grant program. The planning board will soon be embarking on a new community master plan. The involvement of town officials and the citizenry at large in a comprehensive assessment of environmental and infrastructure vulnerabilities due to climate change will ultimately bring an important perspective into later discussions on the various aspects of our long-range municipal plan." Is it good?
Good.
Okay. So could I have a motion to have this signed by the chair?
Motion, private side.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
These guys aren't to sign it, just me? That's it?
There are about five letters of recommendation in the chairs in each board that are signed. But feel free to...
John Hancock coming as well.
You want to take the chairs off? That's it.
Next meeting? Anybody got any ideas? You want to wait till after the first of the year? What do we got? November coming up, maybe the 21st, 28th is Thanksgiving. So tentatively, the 31st, okay with everybody? Okay, with that, Henry, do you have anything else?
That's it.
Guys, you want to talk about anything? Motion to adjourn, second.
Second.
All in favor? I'm sorry, folks, we discontinued the meeting and we voted out, but I had one more thing to bring in, so I apologize for that. It's my fault. But we have a letter from the building inspector to Mr. De Silva on 148 Peckham Road, which requires us to look into this. My own personal opinion is I think we had it all done, but the building inspector broke up a letter. I would like to take this under consideration, if that's okay with you guys? This is a rather lengthy thing and we'd like to look into it. I thought it was all done and over with, but the building inspector has a challenge, so we take that under consideration. Is there a motion?
Motion to continue, I guess.
Well, take it under consideration.
Take it under consideration.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
With the, the challenges for 148 Peckham Road, Henry, you looking at this?
I'm looking at that.
Thank you, folks. I'm sorry, folks, that was my fault. I should have brought this up. I screwed up. If you want to rent the planning board, you want to have it too, you can take out anything you want. Thank you very much.